We can rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's county council meeting. I'd like to remind everybody to please silence their phones if they have, or any electronic devices, set to silent or vibrant, please. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from our May 2nd meeting?
If there's no current confirmation, how will the minutes be accepted?
Motion to approve the minutes as accepted, is there a second?
Second.
May I have a second by Councilwoman Weiss? Any further comments? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes from May 2nd, county council meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes, that what motion carries. I'll pass this down for signature, you can get that done, please. Is there any mail that the council would like to share? Let me see. Okay. If not, I'll move on to our county attorney.
The only thing I have is the--
Do you want to address that now? Yeah. Our county attorney Colin here has put together an ordinance we've asked to amend an ordinance number 0221 relating to appointments to the tourism bureau, which I think they limits them now to two consecutive terms?
No limit.
I mean, the old one?
Oh, the old one limits them to one additional term.
Okay, so they're going to, two terms total?
Yeah.
And this ordinance is to remove that stipulation and make it so that they have as many as they want.
Yeah, at this point, you can reappoint it to as many two-year terms as the executive needs appropriate.
Okay. And also just handed to us, and some of us have not had an opportunity to review this, but I think that we get the gist of what we're trying to accomplish here. We're trying to correct something that, you know, needs to be corrected. Does anybody from the council have any comments, or want to think of us as?
I think it's a good way to keep good people serving.
I agree.
It certainly does, it says what we wanted it to say. There's just a few minor clerical things to clarify.
And I think you may have the corrected document. I got the council--
There's a correctional version.
You have a corrected version?
Yeah.
Okay.
None of the language is different except the clerical.
So it's a tie council.
This order right here, "them" should read "term," of the "term," not "them."
I can make that.
So that's just a minor thing.
Okay.
I need to take and compare those.
So, do you have the ability to correct the signs or decide it, or?
Uh, yeah. They might probably need to print it out.
Okay. Because then we can go ahead and vote on it and get that done. All right. Are there any other questions, would the council like me to read the ordinance?
I have time.
Okay.
If there's no objection, I'll move, we approve ordinance number-- or the amendment, the amending ordinance. Jane, do we have a number for this yet?
2017-01.
2017-01.
And who's currently on the board?
I can't even remember them all. I was further, you know, for--
Woodbridge.
Vador.
The person at Woodbridge and someone from the campground.
Melissa Bunzendahl, I think is on there still, isn't she?
Yeah, and I think is Mr. Robinson from the campground standing there.
I think it's Hannah, his daughter.
Yeah.
And Jennifer the Board, or Jennifer Vador, I think is still.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, anyhow, I'll start over again. I'll move, we approve amending ordinance number 27-01.
Okay, a motion to approve the ordinance number 2017-01, amending ordinance number 02-21.
Make a motion.
Two, a second. Okay, we have a second, and before any further discussion. If not, real quickly, just to recap what we're doing here, we have created an ordinance, amending an ordinance that was created back in 2002, ordinance number 21, relating to the appointments of the tourism bureau. At that time, it was mandated that a person could only serve two terms on a tourism bureau. Now, we are changing that so that there is no term limit, that they can serve as many times as they would like. This keeps good people, like Commissioner, Councilman Jackson said, keeps good people in place that are willing to serve. There's not always a lot of people that are willing to serve in this capacity or go into a time where we appreciate what they do, so this would correct that. At this time, we'll vote, all those in favor of ordinance number 2017-01, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes, that what motion passes. So we'll correct the version, maybe we can recess there if you need that, or can you sneak up, or?
I don't know, go ahead and ask us here.
It's not locked.
Okay.
Whatever you need, just let us know, and we'll get it signed.
Okay.
Okay. Before we get into the bulk of the meeting, there are committee reports and the commissioners' representative. Normally, I would not address this, but I'm going to at this time because I feel that an article by our newspaper, Mr. Sprague, who's here tonight, was in serious error. And though I appreciate the work that Mr. Sprague does, he does a wonderful job with his capture of the English language, but in this case, I think he failed some of us. In his article, he puts, "No go, no show is a no-go." Earlier this week, several people in the Fayette County community came together to remember and honor many, many veterans who, through paying the ultimate price, allow us to even have the freedom to gather together. The annual Memorial Day ceremony at the ancient Miller Community Center was, as always, a fitting tribute to those men and women who have given their lives for our nation. It was also inspiring to see the many local veterans come together to pay respect to their fallen brothers and sisters in arms, as they always do. If anything, that shows just how strong the bond between veterans, living and dead, truly is. It is an unbreakable bond. What wasn't inspiring, however, was something missing from this year's ceremonies. What was missing, you might ask? Local government officials from the city of Connersville and Fayette County, that's what. Of all those who attended Monday's ceremony, there was one, count it, one, local elected official, Fayette County Sheriff Joey Loughlin. The rest, county commissioners, the mayor, city council, board of works, county council, were missing in action. No pun intended. Some of those elected officials, believe it or not, are even veterans themselves. That is shameful, disheartening, and borders on plain disrespect. Often, we hear from our elected officials about the need for the community to come together, the need to buy into ongoing efforts and plans to better our community, the need to volunteer and help the community, the need to be positive and be kind to your fellow residents. We also hear about the need to put our trust in them as elected officials to make the best decisions possible for Connersville and Fayette County. Yet, when it comes to a day in which we honor the sacrifices many men and women throughout the ages have made for this country, sacrifices allowing us to still operate as a free nation and as a democracy, the very democratic system that allows our elected officials to be elected in their positions by us, in the first place, nary and a local elected official is found honoring those fallen. It would have taken all of an honor for that, for that's roughly how long the ceremony was, one hour of their off day from government work, to show up and not only pay respect, but show their very community that they do give a damn. They not only respect the sacrifices made by our fallen veterans, but the efforts of their own community to honor those sacrifices. It's not as if Fayette County hasn't had a share of fallen veterans, who paid the price for our freedom, more than 100 since the time of the Civil War, who have died in the field of battle, according to local veteran Mike Moore, on Monday. Maybe that hour on Monday at the John H. Miller Community Center was simply too, just too much time for our local officials, on a day which many unfortunately view as an off day for barbecuing, downing cold ones, or lounging around. Who knows? Maybe it was because it's not an election year in Connersville and Fayette County, and there weren't hands to shake, babies to kiss, and photo ops to be had in order to garner votes. You know something, though? That hour wasn't too much, though, for a local man and World War II veteran Charlie Hughes, who is over 90 years old, to make it to the ceremony Monday. That hour wasn't too much, though, for a local man and World War II veteran Bob Navi, who isn't too far off Hughes' age, to make it to the ceremony Monday. That hour wasn't too mu-- too much, though, for a local man and Korean War veteran Rife Rude, to make it to the ceremony Monday. That hour wasn't too much, though, for a local man and U.S. Army veteran Dave DeBord, who is wheelchair-bound, to make it to ceremony Monday. That hour wasn't too much for local residents and veterans to come to the ceremony Monday, if only to give back a little of their time and respect as a show of gratitude for the lives given by veterans across our nation through the years. Even on the local level, whether you love him or hate him, U.S. President Donald Trump even took the time out of his day Monday as a leader of the free world to pay his respects and honor the fallen during ceremonies at Arlington National Cemetery in Arlington, Virginia. In Connersville and Fayette County, however, that respect, at least from our, from local elected officials, seems to be sorely lacking. Those officials need not take, those officials need to take a real hard look in the mirror at themselves. Don't expect the community to buy into your plans, your efforts, and your dreams if you can't even offer an hour of your time to join them to honor and remember the heroes of our nation, the very heroes who make what you do as elected officials possible. During my time in the Army, we often had training where soldiers' proficiency would be tested on the specific task they were assigned to complete. If they passed it, they were given a go at this station. If they failed it, they were given a no-go at this station. On Monday, something became abundantly clear to many in attendance at the Memorial Day ceremony. When it comes to honoring this country and nations fallen, our current elected officials are a no-go at this station. And I feel as the county council president that I have, I should take the opportunity to respond to this. I've talked to Mr. Sprague in the past and how, on these editorials and how they work, and it seems that he forgot a simple rule that he told me, which was that he fact-checks these editorials, to find out what is actually going on. I called Mr. Sprague after I heard about this. I did not get a return call, as I typically would in the past. I reached out to Mr. Hanson, I got no response from Mr. Hanson. I find it appalling that an article would be printed like this, basically slandering every elected official, without knowing what they knew and what they didn't know. I went back and on Facebook, Facebook, the day after the event, found an article here about a Memorial Day, a flyer, Memorial Day ceremony. We do not get the paper, we do not have Channel 3, we have DirecTV, we don't have Channel 3. I have no way of knowing what goes on. In the past, when my presence was requested at an event, at a bicentennial or a statue unveiling, there's been invitations sent to this council or to other elected officials. To my knowledge, every elected official that has ever received those invitations has shown up at these events and given, shown their respect and their support for the event being The comment that really kind of gets under my skin is that some of these elected officials are even veterans. I'm a veteran. I take great offense and exception of that comment, that I, as a veteran, would intentionally slap the memory and disrespect those that have served and given their lives for me and my family. Fifty-eight thousand 220 men have given their lives in Vietnam, those that served, over nine million of them, some in combat zones, some not combat zone, came home to an ungrateful nation that was spit upon. So please do not lecture me upon what I should and should not be doing on my time of Memorial Day. Had I known about it, according to Mr. Smith's article in the paper, which is an article, excellent article as well, it sounds like something I would have surely loved to have attended. So maybe the blame shouldn't be passed at the local officials, which is an easy target. This isn't a Republican or a Democrat issue. This isn't an issue as a whole. We have some wonderful Democrats that served, we have some wonderful Republicans that served. I have serviced the wonderful people that have served and sat in somebody's chair that are not here today, because they either chose not to run, or they were beaten in an election. Agree with them, don't agree with them, they all had one thing on purpose. They weren't here serving because they wanted to do it because it made them popular, and at least I don't believe that. We're not doing it for the pay. You know, picking on elected officials is an easy thing, it's a fun thing, it's an thing to do, it's a hip thing, it's a cool thing, so let's, let's lay it on elected officials, let's land base them, plaster them, because it's easy to do. But how easy, or how hard would it have been to pick up the phone and call and say, "Mr. Wentz, didn't see you at the event today, did you know about it?" If I had said, "Yeah, Mr. Sprague, I was sitting home, sitting fat and happy with barbecue sauce running off my face, enjoying it, drinking a cold one." I don't drink cold ones, Mr. Sprague. Maybe a Coke. I don't drink. I don't use Memorial Day as an opportunity for a day off. As a matter of fact, what I was doing, because this is what we were doing as a family, was actually going through my mother's personal belongings that passed away two years ago on Monday. I've finally gotten to the point where I can go through some of her personal belongings. That was my Memorial Day. So before you start passing judgment on others, I would strongly suggest that you ask. It wouldn't have taken you anything. You write wonderful articles, you do a good job, but I think you let us all down here, and now, if we show up at an event, it will be because, well, James Sprague took them up to the woodshed, and he just educated them. That could be the first thing from the truth. I think each one of us here have a great respect for our community. This community as a whole is one of the most giving communities I've ever lived in. They will give the shirt off their back. Maybe the blame, if you want to assign blame here, has to do with the Fayette County Veterans' Council that didn't let the veterans know, "I'm a veteran, I knew nothing about it. I can't attend something that I don't know." If it's in the paper on Sunday, and maybe some of us were out of town, which some of us were out of town, of the elected officials that I've spoken to, I've only had one tell me that they knew about it, or I read about it on Facebook that actually knew about it. I appreciate the comments in public or on the community website, the social websites, media websites, that have supported us and said the same thing, that maybe they didn't know about it. If we had known about the events, and I'm not passing excuses, because there's none to give, if, if I knew, if I'd known about it, and I blatantly just told you I didn't want to go, I would deserve the criticism. I think, as a journalist, as a newspaper, you owe each and every one of us an apology, because the damage you did is unreparable at this point. I think you went too far. And to say that basically, we don't give a damn, really? You don't know that. I've sat in your office, and I've talked to you, and I've given you facts and figures, and I've given you statistics, and I've given, backed it up, and those things don't make it to the paper. You know, maybe we should invest more in spell check for our paper. Maybe we should learn who the mayor of the city is, after he's been mayor for a year, before we put that Leonard Urban issued a mayor, an award with Harold Gordon as the mayor. Maybe that would be a better way to address things. I'm sure this won't hit the newspaper, I'm sure that we won't see this anywhere, so I'm going to take my opportunity to defend myself and my fellow members that are serving with me. I appreciate you, Mr. Sprague, I appreciate your service to the country, I appreciate what you've done, we've talked about it, but I don't appreciate what you did here. If we would have deserved it, fair enough. Those that knew about it, I would say that. I don't show up at events to kiss babies and shake hands because I think it makes me look good. We've talked. If I choose to run again in this, in this position, it isn't because of the pay, it isn't because of health insurance that may or may not be offered to some people, it's not because it's a status thing, or it strokes my ego. I'm here because I want to try and make a better place for my children to live, and I think that's the case for most of us here, that we, that's the interest of them. I believe our commissioners work hard, I believe our city counterparts work hard, and I think they do a good job. We don't always get it right. We try. We don't always get it right, and that's unfortunate, but there's no manual, there's no classes, there's no job that you can go, the day you step in here, just you take your first seat, it's on-the-job training. So, I would hope that the committee would try to buy into what we are trying to do. I think we are trying to build a better community. But, as you stated here, when it comes to honoring this country and the nation's fallen, our current elected officials are a no-go at this station. So, Mr. Sprague, I brought a thing here from the Marine Corps that I so probably served, and I'd be glad at any time or point of time to share with you my SRB, which I'm sure you know is a service record book, and it gives proficiency conduct ratings for Marines, and your goal is to always remain between a 4.5 and a 4.9. Mine were always between a 4.5 and a 4.9, which is considered excellent. The reporting in this article, what we consider, we called unsat Marines, were between 2.0 and 2.9, that's where I put this one. And I'm sorry to say that, but, you know, had you called me back, we could have talked about this, but you chose not to, I know you've received other emails. And I'm sorry that I was not at this event. To the community, the public, to those that planned, I'm sorry. But if anything, hopefully it opens up us, our eyes as a community, to what we need to be doing in the future, which is better communicating what we want to do and to honor those veterans that have served and given their lives before us. You know, we should have a parade, I remember those as a kid, we don't have a parade, there's a lot of people talking what they want to do now, and hopefully this, if anything, we've got broad shoulders, we can take it, it's fine. If anything, hopefully this opens up some discussion as to what we can do in the future to make this better for veterans and honor their memory. I agree, it should be attended, but I'm gathering from the tone of the article that maybe it wasn't as well-attended as you would have liked and others would have liked, and I agree. But I think mostly it's actually an innocent mistake where people didn't know. I don't think anybody really snubbed their nose at the event, I think people just didn't know. I didn't know. The sound of taps for some is very disturbing. The sound of amazing grace at a memorial service is very disturbing, they can't handle that. Everybody deals with grief in their own way, and some choose not to share, show their grief publicly, some want to do that privately. I don't know, I'm not making any excuses for anybody, but, you know, we don't know what veterans were there that have held a dying brother or sister in their arm during combat as they lost their life. What they saw, we don't know that. I don't know that. And I would never pass judgment on somebody that wasn't at an event like this, because I, number one, I just don't know. If they're even in town, they may have celebrated in their hometown, not everybody's from here, they may have gone to another community and celebrated. I don't know what their excuses are, or what their reasoning is. But I would have appreciated maybe a little reach-out from you to say, "Hey, did you know about it?" I spent way too much time on this as it is right now, but I felt that I had a responsibility to address it, and those that know me, I say things the way I say it, the way, the way it should be said, I don't candy coat, I don't sugar coat. Like it or not, this is what it is, and I will stand by what I said tonight, and I will stand behind all my fellow elected officials that are serving, both Democrat and Republican. I will stand shoulder-to-shoulder with each and every one of them, and I will not pass judgment on it. If anybody else in the council would like to address this?
Mr. President, thank you for your comments, I appreciate the support, and I agree with everything you said.
Thank you.
Me too. I would only add that it's a shame, this, I did attend it last year, the only reason I knew about it last year was my, my boss who lives in Greenwood told me that her dad was speaking. This wasn't on Facebook prior to that I knew of. I specifically look at Channel 3, and I watch the Chambers events, and document my calendar by it. Wasn't posted, didn't know it was going to happen.
Councilwoman Strong?
Well, we're 25 minutes into the meeting, Mike, and I won't expound on this, but I'm only, I was disappointed in the newspaper editors' choice of description of various people in the community, so I'll leave it at that. I hope sometime or another, we'll get an opportunity to discuss it amongst ourselves.
And to those that planned the event, I want to thank you for doing what you did, for planning the event, and hopefully in the future, maybe we can all plan an event that we can all be a part of and be proud of, and we won't have this misunderstanding in the future. And so I'm going to consider it as just a misunderstanding and a lack of communication. I'm not, I'm not pointing there's anybody to blame anybody, but I want to thank those that did, those that attended, and show their support for the veterans of our community, because they've given a lot.
I would like to comment that I was attending a very impressive service in memory of the veterans. My sister sang, she was a part of the band, and I was in Minnesota, Lake Minnesota, on Monday with the group, but I was there at the memorial service for the veterans.
Thank you, Ms. King. We'll move on now to more exciting things. We'll move on to our committee reports. Councilwoman Weiss, do you have anything to report?
Yes. We, I think last meeting indicated that we had a safety inspection for the courthouse, and then the following two weeks, we did the inspection for the annex, and had Commissioner Navi was appointed to join our safety group. We are, we have a meeting scheduled for next week to review with him the findings of those two, and to see what our schedule is from there on. And as for the ceremony and wage committee, and the discussion about the manuals, the employee manuals, that we may need to address some of the changes that have happened in the state law or statute since they were printed, we're, have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday to begin that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Strong, it's getting closer to budget season again.
Did you have to say that? Well, Budget and Finance Committee hasn't had a meeting since our last meeting, so there's no report to give. Speaking of budgets, Jane, do you mind if I tell everyone when your budget workshop is with DLGF? Auditor Downard has been notified that her budget workshop with DLGF is July 27th, right? Is that correct, Jane?
Yes.
So, that's much earlier than what we, what she had last year. So just be warned that anytime after that date, we have scheduled budget hearings to start. In years past, normally, we would begin on the second week of August. So we'll be able to do that this year, if that's what you choose, so keep that in mind. That our, the auditor's budget workshop is back to a normal schedule this year compared to last year, so we won't be starting really late on our budget hearings unless we choose to, and I really hope you don't choose to, I'd rather get that over soon as we can.
I'll just give a public thank you to Wayne Hudson for scheduling me that early, too, because he's not doing like touch-ups and stuff until later in August.
Yeah, Wayne, Wayne Hudson, he has done us a favor by putting us on the front burner.
Plastered around the eight ball, because it wasn't till autumn of August.
Right. A full month later, so that really didn't cost us any time.
Dale, you said July 27th?
July 27th is when Jane has her budget workshop with the DLGF. And we can't start budget hearings until after she does that, so, you know, you don't have to worry about the 27th for yourself, but after that date.
It just, like Dale said, it just lets us know that that's the time when we can start thinking about scheduling our budget hearings, after that date.
So don't forget, Mike, don't let us forget that.
You've got it right here.
Okay.
In blue and white.
We've got some department heads here, you know, we want to be sure and invite you to all that fun we have on this. You know, we want to be sure and invite you to all that fun we have on August.
Commander President, Commissioners, did you want to, did you have anything for the council? Okay, we have nothing from our Commissioner representative. Thank you for being here. Under old business, we had talked about this August meeting once before. And we toyed with the idea of having our August meeting at the County Fair. And Councilwoman Strong, I discussed it again last week on the phone?
Yep, I remember you mentioning that.
And we both think it'd be a good idea to have a council meeting at the County Fair. That way Councilwoman Weiss could sneak away from her chicken dinner thing and help us a little bit.
We're also having a blood drive that evening from 4 until 8 on August the 1st, so.
We're always giving blood.
That's right.
Sometimes more than one.
I think it, I think it would be good. I don't have to decide where the venue is going to be, where we're going to hold them.
We'll let the Channel 3 work for that. If you, so let's, I would like to make that suggestion that we have it at the County Fair and that maybe we consider, as long as it falls, our council meetings, I think it's a good opportunity to get up in front of the public and have a meeting and get whatever. We just got to put a Plexiglas shield up from Flying Tomatoes or whatever. But I think it'd be a good opportunity to be up in front of the public and to do that.
I agree.
Where at the fair? I don't know. We can figure something out. We've got a couple months. We can figure something out. We don't need a lot of space.
Well, last year at the, they, whatever you want to call it, the outside in the heat and we had a hard time hearing, so I recommend inside somewhere.
There's a reason for that. We didn't want to hear what you guys had to say. They don't want to hear what we had to say either. Now, we, maybe Mr. Pazey and so forth, we can get together and figure a space out that will work. I think the problem with having it inside is that.
People won't show up.
People won't show up.
Maybe a different location.
Different location. We will figure it out. There's, I think it was the first time they did the debate like that outside, to my knowledge. And so there's a learning curve there. I'm sure that things that they would like to change, on a different TV3, so. Is everybody in agreement with that? So should we take a vote and make a motion and salute?
Second.
Second? You for the discussion? All those that, let's have a roll call vote. Let's have a roll call vote for this.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Okay, Kate?
Yes.
Shirley?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Suppose I have to say yes, too, since I suggested yes. Okay, motion passes, 7-0. We'll have our August meeting at the fairgrounds. I guess I'll get with Mr. Pazey and figure something out that works. I think it's a good idea. Thank you, Councilman, for that. Also like to thank you for putting a reminder out of here to remind me, the reminder of our joint city meeting Thursday, June 8th at 6:00 PM here in the conference room. The things that we, on the agenda are community voices. The president is going to, Councilwoman Weiss, who's the president of that? Or who's in charge of that?
Well, I believe Linda Fitzgerald.
She mentioned somebody else.
It's Jen Barrett.
Yeah. She's going to address this?
Pardon?
Jen Barrett.
Jen Barrett, yes.
She's going to address this. And then we are going to talk with the city about EMS funding and so forth. Those are the few things that we're all going to focus on. Was there one of them?
Shirley, something she wanted to add.
We have a subcommittee that has addressed the last meeting, was set up the first meeting, addressed the last meeting, just an update of some of the things that are going on downtown.
Okay. And that was it. Why am I thinking of, I'm missing something?
Future goals.
Future goals. Future goals between the city and the county. What we want to try to accomplish jointly together. Hopefully you will be able to get out of it fairly quickly. All right. Judge Freed, you're up deck, on deck next with your drug court.
President, Linda, I appreciate that. You always defer to me because of my busy calendar during the day. Obviously, there's no court tonight. And I'll tell you the truth, not that it's my place to say it, but I got plenty of time tonight then. And I would defer to our sheriff because of the day he's had today. If you care to let him have that spot in my place, he has had a tremendous day and he's deserving of getting home sooner than later, I think.
Well, I've asked for him to be here for the entire meeting tonight, so.
Oh, is that right?
Unfortunately, he's kind of stuck here because if there's anything that needs to be addressed, I would like our sheriff to address it, not us.
Okay. Very well, then.
Not to, I appreciate, I'm sure the sheriff does, too.
I'll try to keep this brief. I know some in attendance at the other, your companion body, where I gave this same little speech about drug court, which I'm attempting to get started. I don't know how many of the council people are familiar with this concept at all. It's something that's been discussed in the popular media to some extent. State of Ohio had it a few years before Indiana did, but it's a national thing for sure. I have tacit approval from the Supreme Court to do so. I have acquired a small grant of $2,500, no matching funds, just a straight up $2,500 grant from State Court Administration. Basically, the Supreme Court hands out this money because they're wanting us to do these courts. And so I'll be taking training for it in July, again, at no expense to the county. I've got state money already in hand for that. And what it is, for those of you who are totally unfamiliar with it, as you know, the war on drugs, as we've discussed many times privately and amongst yourselves, I'm sure, is something we're not winning. It's just very obvious that we're not winning. And so this is an attempt at something revolutionary or pseudo-revolutionary, I suppose, to try to do something really significantly different. And so the general concept is this, that we take, I'm proposing to start with about a dozen people who are currently under criminal indictment. Usually the cases are pretty solid against them, so they think they're pretty much on the hook. They don't think they're probably going to be able to beat it. At least their attorneys are telling them that. And so they might be looking at any number of years in prison that you might imagine, anywhere from, you know, two, four, six, eight, 20. And they think they're not going to be able to beat it. There lies the motivation. So here is, here is the carrot part of the program. If you then agree to be a drug court participant, we'll pull you out of jail with cooperation with Community Corrections Department. And Michelle's been great about coaching me on these issues so far, and she's certainly welcome to chime in at any time she'd like to add something on this issue. We pull them out of jail. We put them in the care of Community Corrections. They first then, however, before that happens, have to plead guilty to the crime. Plead guilty, what we call an open plea, meaning I can sentence them to anything up to the statutory maximum for the crime which they pled guilty to. And they agree to participate in the program. The program lasts 18 months, generally can last up to two years. This is the contract that we have with them. It's sort of like a plea deal. It is a contractual type agreement where it is binding, okay? They pled open and they expect to get, if they successfully complete the program over the span of a year and a half to two years, if I deem that they have successfully completed it, then the prosecutor agrees that they will simply up and dismiss the charges altogether to get off scot-free, all right? So obviously, that is a huge incentive. Someone who's going to be in prison for a period of many years, even decades, might be able to get off scot-free if they're able to kick out the drug act, which, of course, we only select those who we believe to be criminalized only because of their heavy narcotics. Okay, that's the whole point of this. That's why it has the word drug in drug court. So what happens then? We bring them in. They have to report to me once a week at a minimum, at a minimum. More if I decide. More on that later. But not only that, then we hire a drug court coordinator. I'll get to that financing. Oh, you're extremely interested in that. And this person basically is, you know, I'm hiring a professional stalker. That's what I'm doing. I'm hiring a professional stalker for these guys. As I, like I described to the Commissioners, it's like a super Superman probation officer who, instead of like our regular probation officers who have to supervise 200 or 300 people, one can simply do the math, 40 hours a week, and you're supervising 300 people. How much, how much real close supervision can you get done? You know, it's just minutes that you get to spend with each person. Well, this guy has, or gal, whoever it ends up being, has a dozen people and a dozen people only to be accountable for, and that's their full-time job. So, I mean, they are on them like white on rice, all right? If they tell them they're going to go to a place and get a job, the drug court coordinator follows up on that with the employer and sees if they did show up there exactly when they said they were going to. They check up with their employers to see if they're showing up on time, if there's unexplained absences from work where they might be out doing something they're not supposed to be. Of course, they monitor very closely any kind of rehabilitation classes that they've been ordered to take. Just everything about their life. They just simply take over their lives as a super life coach and monitor for these dozen people. I mean, it's a real commitment for this drug court coordinator. And probably even more than myself as the judge of the court, it's this coordinator who will make the program work or not. The vigor and strength of this person is absolutely essential to success. So the drug court coordinator will bring them all to court in front of me once a week. And the entire board, and I have a mandatory, a compulsory board that would advise me, although I carry all the decision-making authority, there's no voting, but it's an advisory board, has compulsory members, including Community Corrections. Michelle's already agreed to participate as a board member there. Sheriff Laughlin's already agreed to participate as the law enforcement required representative. We have to have a drug treatment facility representative and a probation representative and a public defender representative on this board. So we meet once a week. We meet for an hour, hour and a half, as I have already done in observation in Rush County, who just started one of these last year. And they sit at the conference room table. And the drug court coordinator has prepared a one to two-page analysis of everything this person did in the last week or did not do. And then the board discusses this person. Are they making progress? Do we think they're trying to play us? Are they playing games? What's their status? How do we rate them this week? Then they make recommendations to me. We do that with each one of the participants in very great detail. This is not a flyby. We're getting right down to the nitty-gritty. And then when it's over, I go out on the bench and there they are, sitting in the chair waiting to see me. And I go over the things that have been told to me by the board members and the drug court coordinator. And I either, you know, hug them and tell them how great they've done the last week or I yell at them. And I have a full range of punishments. It's a very unusual circumstance. They give up all their normal criminal law procedural rights, not all, but 99% of them when they plead guilty. So they put themselves voluntarily in my hands, okay? And I can squish them if I need to. And they know. There's no trial. They come in there one day and the board, right before we went out there in front of the bench, said, this guy is joking around here. He's wasting a spot that's valuable in this drug court program. We need to get him out of here. I just come in and say, you know what? Your game's too strong for us. You're trying to, you're trying to snake around and play games with us. We're going to go straight to sentencing. Sentencing is set for tomorrow morning and we're going to do it. And I could max them out. I could max them out. But I don't have to. It's not a black and white, all or nothing type solution because the Supreme Court, when they set this program up, also gave me full incremental discretion. So if it's a minor infraction, I can say, you know what? You're not quite getting your mind right here, sir. So this weekend, you're coming out of the Community Corrections Work Release Center and you're going to jail for the weekend. We'll let you out Monday, just in time to get to your job. But you're not going to stay in the work release center. You're going to go to jail for the weekend. Or for a week, or for a month, or three months, or six months, whatever I need to do, whatever I think I have to do to get their attention and make the point. So I think I made the comment at the Commissioners' meeting, it's like a high-stakes game of Simon Says and I'm Simon, all right? They have to do exactly what I say, and if they don't, I can just, I can just put them down like that. It's like, it's like an old prosecutor's dream, I guess you could say. They give you the, they give you the authority and see if you've got the wise discretion to use it. The point is, of course, not to be revoking people off the program. The point is, we're basically taking them to raise and we're trying to mold them into adults in mind when they're only adults in body. I always say we've got so many people running around here through the criminal system that are junior-high-aged children in six-foot-tall bodies, all right? So I'm trying to make responsible adults out of these people in every way possible, education, employment, civic responsibility, and of course, key to all those first, is to get them off the dope, which we're going to give them all kinds of help for that as well. There is incentive programs where I can help them if they're having trouble paying for their gas to get to a job that's out of town. I can, I can, out of this grant money that I'm hoping to get, actually give them gas money to help them succeed. If they get a job, let's say at Honda or something in Greensburg, it's a lot of gas going. I can do that if I feel, if I feel that is necessary. So it's an omnibus program where the state would be giving me, the Supreme Court has authorized me through this program to basically do whatever ultimately I think is necessary to strengthen these people up with very, very little in the way of limits. I mean, they're just opening the floodgates. This is one of those deals where the government has finally said, you know what? We've been trying for a long time to do it the old way. It's clearly not working. Here you go, judges of Indiana. If you think you can do it, if you can micromanage these people and you've got your experience and your ability to have a go at it, we're out of options, so here you go. We're just giving you the keys to the kingdom and 12 people, 20 people, whatever is up to at that time, we'll see if you can do it. So it's really, it's really different and really interesting.
So you were kind of handcuffed before, right?
Well, yeah. I mean, sure. I mean, the procedural rights that an individual, your county attorney here is also a criminal attorney, he can tell you, are quite extensive and rightly so. I mean, I'm proud of our constitutional criminal procedural rule. I'm not here to criticize them. But when you're dealing with someone in this kind of addiction phase, they're so slow is the problem. The speed with which a person can assert and their attorneys must, by their duty as attorneys, assert their rights is not conducive to rehabilitation, all right? When you do something, you get arrested for a crime and their attorney can delay the process, a lot of discovery issues and all kinds of other things that they can do. And so if they even get punished, it's six months, nine months, a year, a year and a half later. Those of you who have raised or have been around children that are raised, you know when your child messes up, you don't wait six months to yell at them about not taking the trash out, okay? They don't get it. That doesn't work. The distance in time between the misdeed and the consequence must be close. And so they've closed that gap for me and they're going to give me the ability in a matter of days or even hours in the case of emergency. I can, I could do it even without calling them to the bench. I can order them back to jail. I mean, you know, Michelle, or Community Corrections, says, hey, the guy showed up, hired a kite. The meeting's not till Thursday. This is Tuesday. I'd just say, go ahead and walk him across, put him in the jail. We'll see him Thursday morning after he's dried out. We'll decide what we're going to do with him on a long-term basis, but right now, straight to the jail. So it's, it's an unprecedented level of authority that the state is granting to judges. If you thought judges maybe had a lot of authority before, you haven't seen anything yet. This is almost giving you omnipotent, immediate, dictatorial-type authority over these individuals. It's kind of a scary thing. It's a responsibility that is, well... It's a, it's a responsibility that is, well, it's daunting. I mean, it really is. I mean, you're, you're taking these people in your hands and their lives, and they've already just opened themselves up to you and pled guilty, and they know that you can just hammer them at any time. So, it's not to be taken lightly, and I am not taken lightly. This is our, I think, really, I don't wanna be fatalistic, but this is our last best chance to start winning some of these fights at least. We have hundreds of people who need this kind of treatment, I think. But, we've gotta start somewhere, so if we can start with a dozen, we have these cohort programs, they call them, where we'll have 12 people, let's say, to start with, and then in a six-month period there to move, if they've all been successful, which is what we hope, they'll move into Phase Two. And for example, part of Phase Two would be going from work release, in the work release center at night, sleeping there, living there. Then in the second six months, if they've done well, I may allow them then to move to house arrest for the second six months. And if they do house arrest without making any errors or upsetting me with their behavior, then I may allow them to be on, to just stay at home or their own apartment with, let's say, maybe, it's totally up to me to decide, based on the risks. They have to call in every day. We have a daily calling proba, with probation, let's say. They have to show up every morning. They don't have a monitor on them, but they have to show up at probation physically every morning. Or they have to call in, or any combination of whatever I think is right at the time. Judges are fresh out of excuses when you take on this program because they, like I said, they've given you the keys to the kingdom. If it fails, it's my fault, I'm telling you in advance, okay? I've got all the authority that, that common sense would, would dictate anyone could ever have in such a situation, so there's no excuses.
If I may, Judge.
Yes.
There was an article in the paper the other day by a former commander, Navy commander named Piperal. We talked about basically decriminalizing a lot of drug behavior. It sounds to me like you're talking about the courts have, are far ahead of our legislature and our Congress.
The problem is that, that according to his figures, since President Nixon's War on Drugs, we spent a trillion dollars on enforcement and we're in worse condition than we ever were.
Right.
So, it's time to realize that what we're doing isn't working. And from what you're talking about, that's, it's a dime, it's a 180-degree different approach to the problem. That said, am I correct that a lot of the programs for detox and rehab and counseling, et cetera, will be coming from state and/or federal funds funding programs?
Yeah. That was the next part. I mean, that's the fun side of the story, this is the council. So, I know everybody wants to talk about the money, I haven't mentioned it yet. Save the best for last. So, there is a grant available that's, as you know, Michelle could speak better to this than I, there is this, 1066 is the number.
1006.
1006, rather, I'm sorry, I always misspeak there. The House Bill 1006, which ended up passing a, a great deal of money that has been coming to, that's basically what has facilitated the, the great Community Corrections program that we have over there now. This money, I think they liked what they saw with that, and so they've expanded that funding and these, these monies are now available for Drug Court. And on an 80/20 matching funds basis, okay? So, here's, now we're right down the brass tacks. It's an 80/20-type matching funds grant. I don't understand, I mean, the 20 comes first, not the 80. But, so that's what I'd be looking for, and that's why I'm here. This is what I call the, between the commissioners and the council, the no-surprises tour. So, if we do get approved for this grant, to actually get the money, we would have to come up with 20% of what the grant, which I predict, and I'm scaling this based off what I observed from Judge Hill in Rush County. As I told the commissioners some weeks ago, their program is a dozen people. Obviously, we have, just on a cursory glance, a much greater drug problem in Fayette County than they have in Rush County. So, I'm not saying we should keep the program at 12, but because I'm so anxious to have it be a success, I don't wanna bite off more than I can chew in a first group. So, for the first six months, I would intend that we would, we would not go over 12. The second six months, if everything's running smoothly, we'll just ramp it up as fast as I think we can make it work. But again, you see, you can't get to the point, which is what we're trying to get away from, where you have too many people to be supervised with too little supervision, then you're right back to where you started with. We already have that with regular criminal probation. So, you have to have this ratio of these supervisors being able, through the low number of people they're supervising, to stay on them like crazy, all right? I mean, that's what it takes. I mean, these folks, when they're, when they're jonesing for this dope, they're so clever and, and, and no matter what they were, were like in life prior to being on the dope, they are liars while on dope. Clever liars. And you just have to check everything they say. If they tell you it's daylight out, you better go look out the window. I mean, that's the kind of supervision it takes. Now, we're hoping to get them away from that and get them, get them back to being the, the good people that we hope they, they were before and can be again prior to their addiction problems, but, so that's what we're looking for. And I think it'll be about, he's right at 100,000, I think just a tad over 100,000 over in Rush County to supervise 12. It seems to be going pretty well. They don't think that's excessive, but it seems to be at least barely adequate. And so, that's what I would be shooting for in our opening, which would, of course, as you can see, require, you know, something in the 20 to $25,000 range as far as the contribution from our local funding.
Judge, I just did some quick, quick figuring. We get $35 a day for felony inmates from the DOC. Using that at 12 or 365 days a year, that's a $153,300 savings.
Right. Right. So, I'm asking for 20, and hypothetically, if you make 150,000.
Hypothetically.
I'm going to snatch 12 people right out of your jail within the first couple of weeks of this program. They're out of there. Now, depending on how it goes, a couple of them may have to go right back, we'll see. But, at the beginning, I'm gonna take 12 right out of, right out of Sheriff Laughlin's population in, in the first 10 to 15 days.
So, if you take one of them out, do you find another one to fill that person's spot?
Yeah, that's the whole point, yeah.
So, then you, you've gone through 13 at that point, but the 13th one is back?
Right. I could put them in jail and then bring them back. It depends on whether I wanna save their spot in the program or not. If I'm gonna just sentence them and be done with them altogether, they're kicked out of the program, excommunicado forever, then, you know, we might find a replacement. But, if I'm just putting them in there for two days, a week, a month, to make a point with them and then bring them back into the program, hoping they, you know, change their attitude a little bit, that will save their spot, will not fill it.
Now, when they're in community corrections, are they then responsible for their community corrections?
Sure are.
Yeah. And then on the, just a comment, I, I have a, I'm friends with a couple of people that are in recovery that are doing Drug Court in Rushville. And they are very driven to be successful. They, that, that weekly contact with the judge, they don't wanna be out of line. And I mean, I get that from them every time we've ever spoken about Drug Court.
Well, you're stepping up and sticking your head in the guilty. Every time you come to that bench every week, it could be the end for you.
Yeah. And they, and they acknowledge that, and it's a huge commitment for them.
Yeah.
I mean, to, to.
I would think it would be scary.
Yeah, to be in recovery.
Place myself in their shoes. Every week going in there, you're talking about being nervous. Every week you go in there, if you know you haven't done anything, hopefully you're not too nervous. If you did a little something and think you got away with it, you're a boy in shirel and they didn't find out something.
The, the, the couple I'm talking about, their biggest concern is conflict of schedule. Like, something has happened and they've been out of line just a tiny bit in their, in their schedule, and it's like, I gotta be where they say I'm gonna be.
Yeah.
And so.
You better have an excuse.
Yeah.
I mean, that Drug Court Coordinator's gonna ask you. If, if he calls your boss and says, "Has he been late at all?" Well, he was late five minutes one day. They're gonna ask about those five minutes. What were you doing those five minutes? Were you only buying the building, buying some dope?
So, what are we talking about, timeframe from when the grant gets appro, if it gets approved to inception?
Okay. Here's the deal on that. And I don't know if Michelle's heard anything since last week we spoke on this, nothing on that, okay? Here's where we're at. It turns out that this money has been appropriated to some of these other courts than the year before, and last year and the year before that. And some of them are non-compliant. The workload for the reporting and statistical record-keeping is quite high. Everybody knows there's no free lunch, right? When you get grants, you don't just get the money and say, you know, "We'll see you later." They want incredible amount of reporting and paperwork. I think some of these people must have gotten these grants and found out that the workload was just too much for them. They didn't do what they're supposed to. And so, the, the money is not dished out all at once, it's just out of, in parcels throughout the year, throughout the fiscal year of the grant. And so, they just withheld the money from them. So, Michelle is informing me that last year, I think in July, mid to late July, the people that administered the grant at Indianapolis came out with an email to the current grant participants and other county agencies who weren't already grant holders and said, "Now, here's all this pile of money, a couple million dollars, that they withheld from people who already had the grant in hand and just let that money be not given to them due to non-compliance." And they said, "We're gonna offer those people who would like to amend their existing grants or new people who would like to have a half-term grant," all right? The, the grant runs on a fiscal year, July 1 to June 30. And so, ordinarily, you would start the program if we were to apply by the end of the year under the ordinary grant cycle by the end of the calendar year, in December. We would then, if we were successful, get our money in July, in July, start July 1st with Drug Court, okay? But, if some of this money gets withheld from other non-compliant participants this year, in, well, about six, seven weeks here, we'll know, we could apply for one of these half grants, which we would then get the money for to begin using January 1st in the middle of the fiscal year. So, that's what we're hoping for. I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to successfully get the grant from the middle cycle and be able to start the program January 1st. Well, January 2nd, we're not gonna start on the year's day, but if not, then we're just gonna make our, well, either way, we're still gonna make a regular grant cycle application as well and hopefully win that one, at least under the normal procedures and have our money for the July 1st, 2018 start date.
So, we're looking at six months to a year.
Six months to a year, yeah.
It would be the current Community Corrections Grant, our base grant, would apply for it then. It goes on my grant application, however, the court would be responsible for their data reporting and their financial in on it, just like the, currently, we have, the probation department got the two new probation officers and an administrative assistant off of the same grant.
Totally.
They award, and I'll get to it, when I get up, I got awarded an additional one full-time employee beginning July 1, and they gave me $61,500 to pay that starting salary and the fringe benefits. Well, like probation, they're not using the fringe, the persons aren't taking insurance. So, when the financial audit comes up, there's a carryover amount, which is your unused funds. Probation this, last year and this year will be sending back unused money. Community Corrections, I send back no money, I spend that out every year. So, when they get all those carryover amount of money back, there may be funds available in, for January. But, if not, it'll go on our next grant cycle, it'll start July 1 of 2018.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Recovery Works, not the location, but the program. Those are, are you familiar with?
Yeah.
Now, would, could Recovery Works cover costs associated?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we have the, the Drug Court Coordinator is supposed, as I said, this is getting rid of what they call silos in management where that, where people say stuff like, "That's not my job." If it involves one of these 12 people and you're the Drug Court Coordinator or the judge, it's your job. So, if they say, "I can't have the money for this," you help them make those applications, any type of money they can get from assistance for rehabilitation, yes, it, omnibus help.
Recovery Works, I mean, does everyone up here know what Recovery Works is? I just feel like it's important.
Go ahead.
It is, it is funding that follows the individual who has a pending felony or a felony anytime in their life. So, if there's, if you have a felony, you can receive dollars to help you in, in treatment and recovery and in even transitional housing. And so, those dollars, I wonder if they even, would you have to be Recovery Works certified?
No, we use Recovery Works now. There's a, it's all through the Judgment Reinvestment Committee, J.R.A., which is the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute, Department of Corrections, your local Community Corrections, probation, the courts. We all have to have a collaborative plan by law from this House Bill 1006. Right now, we have an agreement between the jail, the sheriff of probation, and I, we have a collaborative plan on how, 'cause that's how we put the intensive jail treatment program in at the jail. And we refer to the Recovery Works. I've got two staff members that are up on the Recovery Works, and they know where to send them, who to get in touch with to get.
'Cause it has to have a legal, you have to have a legal referral.
Yes.
To qualify, and it can cover like everything from mental health to, and it follows the individual person. So, technically, that, that 25K might even pay for itself. I mean, I'm just saying, if I understand Recovery Works.
Oh, you mean your matching funds part to use that?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, I don't think.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think so. I think that's kinda, I don't think they're gonna.
But it'll cut the cost.
Well, first of all, you can't start, it's kind of a chicken and egg problem there, the first year at least, because it is the type of individual, and I can't bring anybody into the Drug Court and get them to plead and be contractually bound to the program until the program's already certified and started, and I can't start the program unless I give the state their 20%, so we can get our A's. See what I'm saying?
I understand, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Getting my mind around it.
But, well, I'd love to get in, I mean, we could, but I'm, I don't know 100% sure, but I'm thinking that's not gonna be helpful for the matching funds part.
But other parts.
But other parts.
Judge, could it recoup, we could recoup that matching money through the Recovery Works?
Let, I mean, as those.
As billables.
As those clients go through the program.
For, for her fees in Community Corrections, possibly, I don't know.
On my grant, the grant that comes from the Department of Corrections, there is no matching funds.
Okay.
So, I know there is an 80/20 match on some other grants out there, but this one, there is no matching funds.
Well, that's, that's what I've been told so far in my research, with that, it might be 40%.
We're gonna save a lot of money if you do this, though.
Well, look, I mean, as Councilman Jackson was talking earlier, that was the best-case scenario he was referring to, is when I pulled 12 people out of the jail and the sheriff is able to save the money that cost to keep them, or maybe even sell those beds in some perfect world, but, you know, to break even, 150,000 versus 20,000, I only have to have a success rate of, you know, three.
Come out ahead.
See what I'm saying? So, I think the odds of us coming out ahead money-wise on this are extremely good. I mean, the history of this program, I've talked to some other places beside Rush County as well, the success rate is much better than that. It's not a 25% success rate. Some of these places are having 85, 88% success rates over, you know, Iowa I know, that have had this program for four and five years and are consistently in these cohort groups that start, that's what they call them, the cohort groups, you know, the people that are in the first six-month program, who then graduate to the second phase of the program, whom we bring in another 12 people to start behind them in Phase One. Phase Two then completes Phase Two successfully, they move to Phase Three, Phase One moves to Phase Two, we get a new group that starts Phase One. See, it's this.
Cyclical.
It's this cyclic, staggered system. So, we could, we could end up with, you know, three dozen people at once in the thing. If, again, we'll have to grow the staff of the program and the grant money I'm gonna be asking for, then each cycle will have to go up because, as I said, sure failure, sure failure if you try to cheapo on this and you don't have enough supervision for these people, because they will run you. these people, because they will run you to ground. These addicts in heavy addiction will absolutely run you in the ground with the lies and the deceit sneaking around. I mean, you have to be on them, on them, on them.
Just to clarify, I want to make sure that we're, and I know that you're not saying it this way, this isn't about a money thing, it's about the success and the rehabilitation of those that are, that's the main focus of this. It's not about the money thing. We talked a little about that, but for those that are watching, the gist of this is to help people.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, for sure.
Just don't want any misunderstanding.
No, no.
You're just trying to do to make money or save money. That's a byproduct.
Well, I got news for you. Even if I take 12 people out of there, you're still going to lose money out of the jail, right? Right? If I gave you $150,000 right now for the jail budget, would that, would that make you healthy? Would that put you in a profitable situation? I'm not your budget guy, but I know that much. $150,000 is not going to feed the bulldog. Yeah, right. So we're incrementally helping you, but we're certainly not turning this into a vast profit-making operation. Clearly, Mr. Winter has pointed out correctly that this is about the program, the people. It's about the people. And having, you know, the money that we might save upfront that would recompensate us then for the 20% matching that we may have to give, that's the upfront issue, the upfront good thing for the council's financial and fiscal perspective. But the long-term issue, aside from the humanitarian aspect of having all these, hopefully, you imagine some utopian five-year from now world where we have 60 people who have graduated from this program and none of whom have been rearrested, none of whom have had any backslides, you know, that's maybe just shooting them a little high, but even if it's half that many, tremendous. Those are 30 people who are going to get arrested every six months, 12 months, or 18 months and be over in the jail on a repetitive cycle. So that's the long-term benefit.
And those are parents that are home with their children rather than being.
That's right. They're home raising their children without being on drugs and they're so happy to do it.
And we're not paying foster care.
Foster care, and we have insisted for not less than a year and a half, up to two years, that they maintain stable employment. Hopefully, then when they graduate, they can continue to stay there or even move to a better job, be off welfare, be able to get, you know, get in a position to be excellent parents again, as they might have been prior to their addiction. All these are good things, possibilities on the back end, all these things.
I know some other counties that have done the drug courts, so I'm familiar with it, very much in favor of it. It's definitely a good thing.
I appreciate your comments. Thanks a lot, Kay. I'm going to be doing a, like I said, I've already looked at Rush County's, I spent the whole day over there, half-day over there. They do theirs on Thursday morning and spent the whole session with them. I sat through their whole board meeting, then I sat through their whole courtroom session where the judge dealt with each one of the participants. Judge Hill happens to be an old law school classmate of mine, so I've known him for 20 years. That's nice to have him as a reference point somewhere nearby in Rush County. But I'm going to try to get up to Greenfield. Their program comes highly recommended up there as well. I need to set an appointment to get up there. I have to shut my own docket down for a full half-day, which is, which is hard to do, takes some advanced planning. But I'm going to try to see as many of these as I can, see some folks that come recommended as really running a well. And so that's what we hope to do. I think I've taken up a lot of time here. I'm sorry about that, those who are waiting. Do you have any other questions?
Judge, I'll just say this. You picked a really good time to give us a heads-up on this, because we're just a matter of weeks away from budget hearings.
Right.
Our 2018 budget. So I know that you and Michelle will certainly be doing your homework and gathering all the pertinent information as far as available grant money and that sort of thing between now and then. So when, I'm hoping that when you come in here for all of us budget hearings, that we will have everything in front of us we need to be able to decide whether or not we can proceed with this, right then and there.
You know, this town being certainly familiar with the factory, the factory terminology in nature, so there's the old J.I.T., right? The Just in Time Delivery.
Exactly.
I fear, Ms. Strong, Councilman Strong, that we may have that in this way, too. As you heard me say earlier, the way the fiscal year is set up and then your budget meeting is beginning August, and the state, of course, is governed by deadlines, as far as I can tell, of their own making only. So they'll tell us whenever they like to tell us if there's any of this half-year money available, but it was available, made note, made note of in July last year. So from the time that they tell us that there's money available, how much, you know, set a deadline, which is going to be very short for us to get an application in, this is all going to be going on, and then your budget meeting, this is all going to be going on. I think, I fear within the span of 10 or 15 days, you know? So you'd have to be in the starting blocks, ready to go.
Well, I certainly understand the Just in Time concept.
Yeah.
And I don't like it.
Anymore. I'm afraid that's the way it's going to be with this, but we'll get it done.
I'm just going to just put it out there that several of us in this room are a part of the Drug Coalition here, and there are also some grant funds that will probably be available to us all.
Exactly.
Talk to Joe.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm not too proud to beg, you know, we'll get some money if we can get it. We need it. We need it. There's people to be helped and we want to do it. Anything else?
I can say that we can't afford not to do this.
I think, even if it works out poorly, it's a winner.
If one person lives.
I mean, one person, you know.
We gotta try something.
We gotta do something. We're not winning now. I guarantee you, we're losing. That's sure, that's sure for me. I'll tell you that. I mean, it's incredible, the problems over there at the jail. We're not, we don't have money for jail. We wouldn't be very sensible to building a facility. If we build a facility to just incarcerate and cage everyone that we needed to cage to physically, that's all we were trying to do, not rehabilitation, just physically separate these people from us, meaning regular, non-crime committing citizens. You'd have to have a jail of, you know, 450 people.
That wouldn't be big enough.
Probably not.
We've got enough empty buildings.
If they met state standards for jails, that true, that you would, but I mean, you know how that goes. I mean, it costs a million dollars to put a toilet in a jail from what I'm hearing.
Typical government.
Yeah. Okay, then.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Judge.
I appreciate it. I think I'm about to.
Happy birthday to you, Judge.
Yeah.
Judge, Judge.
Yeah.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear George. Happy birthday to you.
Judge, you have to come over here, Dave, and give your spanking.
Oh. I would never lay a hand on a judge.
He would be the first in the program.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Judge.
Thanks a lot.
Michelle.
I am here to get 144 approval for the July 1 to the June 30 of next of 18 salaries. And also, I'd just like to add, from what the judge just spoke about, on the intensive jail treatment program, we have, I have staff in a male block and a female block, five to six hours every day doing cognitive behavioral classes that were certified that are drug, aimed at drug addiction and at thinking, learning a different way of thinking. And we've run 98 people through so far and we're getting ready to run another 21 through. And we're seeing people that are getting released from jail, direct to the street, not coming to us or going anyplace else. Some that have even left the jail, went to prison, done the prison time and come back. And the day they get released, they're coming in our building asking for help, because we've had them for some time in the intensive jail treatment programs. And we've told them, the doors open, come in, we'll help you. This week, we had three people that walked in, not sentenced to us, asking for help on getting employment or continuing on with cognitive behavioral classes. And we've got a van that is actually picking people up, the employer, at our facility, people on our program and people just in the community and taking them to a job in Rush County, the employer is, and bringing them back every day to full-time employment, good jobs. So.
That's really good.
We're making some progress there. And it's gratifying to see some of them getting out of jail and instead of going back into old habits or trying things on their own, they're coming to us and saying, okay, I'm now, can you help me? I need to get situated. So we have three this week in the county.
And Michelle, I've had an opportunity to talk to several inmates in that program and they love your staff. They, they really appreciate it. And I think the message that I continually get is who they were when they were arrested is not what they want to be in life.
Exactly.
And learning some skills to, to know how to survive in this world with addiction is essential for their success. And so, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Michelle.
And not only are they coming to us, we have Community Transition Resources out of Shelbyville is coming in doing financial responsibility classes for us. It's a four-week program. And these ladies are helping these people get their birth certificates, they did the tax returns for some of the inmates in the jail. They tracked their two steps, done their taxes, got everything filed for them. And they also offer a savings program. And I've explained that at our advisory board meeting where if, if the person puts $50 a week in savings, they'll match it up to four times, up to $5,000. And they've had two people that got out of intensive jail treatment, they got out, got them a good job and enrolled in the savings program to get them a savings account built up. And there's specified uses for that money, like down payment for house remodeling, education, vehicle. But, I mean, that's a good investment. You deposit 50 and somebody else puts in.
One gentleman specifically mentioned the, those ladies and said for the first time in his life when he gets released, that he's in a position to get his driver's license after like 16 years or something like that. And he, he gave credit to the fact that they helped him figure out the finances to pay fat past, you know, fees and whatnot. I don't understand, but he was so excited and it felt like such hope for him.
Yes.
To be able to have a license for the first time and drive legally.
They helped them overall, I mean, in all aspects. If they got a problem, those ladies go out of their way to help them. And that's a program that's no charge to the taxpayers, the county, our department. They are coming in and volunteering to do that program. So it's a great program. Back to the issue that I'm here for is approval of the 144s. And I emailed everybody on May 11, the 144s, there's three. The first one was the base grant, and it does include raises for the staff for this year. And we met in January, Holly was on the committee to revamp our salary schedule, which has to be done by policy and procedure every two years. And I also emailed that to you. What we did was the 2017 of you resulted in a 5% increase in the top pay for each job classification. That was in line with the probation officers' raise on their salary schedule by state law. So the low range stayed the same and the high range went up 5,000, or 5%. So each position had the top of a low salary. So I emailed all of that to you. And the raises, they went across the board. They varied from around 1,000 was the lowest, up to, I believe, around 2,500. And then the part-time will also get raises also. The raises were done just like last year. They were based on their evidence-based job performance evaluations. We completed those. I took a list and gave Steve, the assistant director, the same list. We did not talk. I wrote down what I thought that person's raise should be based on their job performance. Steve wrote down what he thought it should be, and once again, we were right on. I think there was only a couple that we weren't exact on, and the most we were off was by $300.
Michelle, but before we proceed further, just for the people that are listening, would you care to elaborate where these monies come from?
They are not out of the county general, nothing out of county general. This is all awarded through the grant, which has already been awarded and approved, and through project income, which is the fees that people pay in who are on our program. And that money can be used, it can't go to county general or for any other purpose. It has to stay at, at Community Corrections.
So just for listeners that are listening, the county council has nothing to do with these figures. We don't award them, we don't assign them. This is strictly all grant money that's divvied up, you know? So when people say, well, how can you pay these people this much money? We are basically rubber stamping this. That's all we're doing.
The, by law, Community Corrections has a, an advisory board and by law, it states who is on that board. The advisory board approved these raises, approved the salary for them. The state, who is the Department of Corrections, they approved our budget, as well as the commissioners approved the budget and the application. It's all one form. We have to have commissioner's approval and advisory board approval to even apply for the grant. So it was all approved and the advisory board did approve the salaries.
I just wanted listeners to be aware that.
Right.
There's always different pots that money comes from and not everybody understands that.
Right. Nothing's coming from county general.
Yeah. So.
The, the first 144 that I sent over is for $361,325. That's the salaries for the base grant funding, which is, includes my salary, Steve Gills, Eric Cantrell, Lisa Phillips, Alana Friend, Randy Short, Terry Coombs, Eric Gill, Ryan Shepler, and Jacob Sauerland, full-time staff. And it includes all the part-time facility officers and community service officers. The second 144 is for the House Bill 1006 funds, because they have them, keep them separate now on the grant application. Those are for the positions for, one position is for Beverly Rude, and she is a case manager, split between jail treatment and community corrections. The other is for Derek Harrison, who is a case manager in jail treatment, and I'll be moving him to 100% time at the jail, which is what he's doing now. And a field officer case manager, which is Jason Worth. And then we were just awarded beginning July 1, 30,000, or $61,500 for a full-time person for jail treatment. That position is a new position, so I'll have to go through interviews and such and name that. And that's $123,800 that we've gotten for, from 1006 funding for full, for full-time positions for Bay County. The last one is the TANF grant, which actually is supposed to end June 30. I'm still waiting where there's excess funds that didn't get spent. We didn't spend a bunch of ours because they changed the rules in the red tape at what we're going through it. So now they're saying they may extend it for another year. If they do, I'll have one full-time position for case management at $30,400 for that. Right now, I have Alana Friend in that. She'll be moving over to the base grant to replace Glenda Atkins, who retired. So I'd like to get the, all three 144s approved. If they don't, continue the TANF, I just won't hire anyone for that position.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'll do, we approve all three 144s at the same time.
Second.
Second, Judge. Okay. We have a motion to approve the three 144s for Community Corrections. You have a second? Any further discussion? Not all of them, favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, may. Aye, is that, motion carries. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
I'm going to skip the library boardroom right now, let Tiffany come up. She's been waiting a long. She's been waiting a long time.
Oh, that's all right. So hi, everybody. This is my first time at a council meeting, so I am the current Purdue Extension, county extension director currently. We are still awaiting a second educator. My position is with the county, and I'm doing, or leading the 4H youth development side of things, and also half-time with the agriculture and natural resources. For those who are listening, a lot of people don't really know what the Extension Office does. We are a organization that houses, we work within the county, but we house the forage program here in the county. So if you hear anything about the county fair, we are just the forage part of that. We also work with farmers to get them the credit they need so that they can apply pesticides and do all sorts of things like that. We also have a really amazing community wellness coordinator, who works to try to make our community even healthier, and has kind of spearheaded several different programs, including a farmer's market that was started this past year. This is the second year, and it's coming off pretty strong again. We're excited about that. We also have a new program called Project Grow, and it's both working with Centerstown at the newly established community garden that's still just up and running. So if anyone has any interest in community gardening, just come on down to the Extension Office. We'd love to talk to you and try to get more people involved. But it's going really well with those, those kids down there. And we're also working with the discovery program down at the park, Roberts Park. We also have raised beds and a learning garden there. So the whole point is to teach kids about gardening and to give them some practical life skills. We're also connecting that with topics that will help them in school. So there's a big push for STEM, if any of you have heard of it, science, technology, engineering, and math. So we're taking something fun, like growing things, and being outside and being in the garden, and connecting it with something that might help them in school, and hopefully will help them in school as they move forward. So this is for geared towards kindergarten through sixth graders. So that's a little bit about our Extension Office. We're continuing to try to offer really great programming. Right now, the push is the county fair. I actually just gave a proposal. This was written at the beginning of this past month, so, sorry, the beginning of May. And at that time, we were hiring, and we have now filled both a full-time and a part-time position within the Extension Office, which is very exciting. Means that we're gonna be able to start ramping up and get our county fair put together and everything that we're trying to push and get through. We also have a very busy summer program with Project Grow, so we're able to keep that all floating and running. I'm here to talk about the Extension Office because, and I know this isn't budget time, and I don't expect to get any answers, but I just want to make sure that you're all aware of what I'm hoping for in the next budget hearing. Previously, we had one county staff. Our position, my position as an Extension educator, is actually, I'm Purdue employee. So my, although I work closely with the county, my direct supervisor is actually from Purdue. We are working as a network across the state. There is an office for extension in all ninety-two counties in Indiana. So we are working together and sharing a lot of information, and also having supervision from Purdue University. The county staff are essential for keeping our programs running. I am taken away for forage camp, for example, or different trainings, different obligations. I'm actually taking three kids up to Purdue Academy, which is a program for high schoolers. We have three delegates coming from Fayette County who are actually going to Purdue and learning about the science of flight, which is really exciting. But it's, these are opportunities that somebody needs to come and chaperone and attend, and that's my responsibility as the county educator. County staff are essential to keep our office open, so that we're able to help the public, and we're also able to keep offering all these programs. I wouldn't be able to offer, we have two full days of programming. In the morning, on Tuesday and Thursday, we're at Roberts Park. In the afternoon, we're at the community garden, both Tuesday and Thursday. So just, just myself, I wouldn't be able to offer the same amount of program as I can with extra assistance. So what I'm requesting is actually still going to be below the current budget. We're trying to cut corners in different ways without cutting staff. So I'm requesting to have a part-time staff continue. At the moment, I have approval up through December 31st, and I would love to have continuing approval for our part-time staff. I say I have a couple of key points why this would be important. Number one, we're training in a lot of new people, and even after they're trained in, it just gives us the opportunity to offer more programming. We won't just be sitting on the funds that are offered for this part-time staff. They're gonna be used to improve our programming and also keep our office open. As you all know, one person keeping an office open, it's bound to be closed at certain times of the year, and just because if someone's child is sick, if something happens, just one person can't keep an office open at all times. And of course, I fill in and help out where I can, but my schedule is also a little bit here and there. There's a lot of things that pull me out of the office. I have people who have problems with trees, or different questions that I go out and I actually scout out and see what the problem is, and try to find solutions for those folks around in our county. So we're trying to offer a lot of services from our office, and this will really help us to achieve our goals and actually give really good services without burning out our staff. So I really think that we can achieve that, we help both the full-time and the part-time, because the full-time won't have the whole everyday maintenance of the 4H program and everyday maintenance of our other program areas, like a some policy council that's up and running, a, our, you know, farmer's market is really up and running as well, and we're pretty heavily involved in that as well at the moment, looking for diversifying. But we're definitely involved in a lot of different programs here in the county that are all about supporting our county. So do you have any questions about any, anything that I have written there?
I think you explained it very well.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And essentially, you're just talking about replacing someone that's gone.
Yep, and saving the county money.
Yes, yes.
It's a win-win situation.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought, I understood that you were replacing two people.
So.
Are you replacing one person with two? You're taking one person with thirty years' experience and replacing them with two people?
With one and a half.
One and a half.
One and a half, yeah. So the idea isn't to go up to two. The idea is to stay with one and a half. That way, we're able to actually have that half-time person step in if something happens or even just as a training pipeline, so that we're not starting from zero. If some, if something happens, or if we end up having to replace someone in, down the line in the future. This way, it just makes it a little bit more sustainable for us as an office. We're able to kind of keep our office well-staffed at all times, hopefully. Because even with a part-time staff, it makes a huge difference for just staying afloat. Because, yeah, as I broke in there, it's kind of interesting to look back, even one month ago, just being the only one in the office is just not, you can't get anything done. It's not, not possible with all the people that are coming in, so. Any other questions at all?
Tiffany?
Yes.
The last time you were here, you'd had a seat, the senior employee in your department had retired. That left enough slack in your budget for the rest of the year. Didn't we authorize you to add an additional part-time person for the rest, remainder of this year?
Yes, yes, so.
What does, how, how is that related to this? Is this an extension of what you?
This, yes. So basically, what I'm asking for is just for you to consider an extension. I already got the approval for the, up until December 31st, and I just wanted to make sure that, just out of, partly out of disrespect for this part-time employee, so that she doesn't have to be in limbo for too long, I just wanted to come and just hear generally what you're all thinking, and if it, if it seems feasible, that she might be able to continue on. Because I would like to just keep her on staff if possible.
Okay, I'm getting the picture now.
Yeah.
I think, I think in August, some budget hearings would be the more appropriate time for you to make this proposal, and we would be in a better position to know whether or not we can actually do it.
Of course, yeah. And I don't expect to know for sure. I don't expect to know anything, actually. I just wanted to bring it forth, just so that you would have the heads up, and just know, here's what I'm thinking, when the time comes, in August, we can discuss it further and know, and know for sure.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, that's fine.
Would you be willing to wait until budget hearings to further discuss it?
Certainly, yeah. I don't expect at all for this. I just wanted to put this out there to all of you, so, yeah. That's, I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
I appreciate the heads up, for sure.
Yep, no problem, yep.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I feel perfectly good about that, so, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And really, sincerely, thank you for all those hours, because I know you're doing a lot.
Yeah, oh, no, and of course, I, yeah, I really believe in what we're doing down there, and I think it is a good support for our community. I really, it's wonderful, and I thank you all for your service as well. You've done really good work, so, thanks.
Thank you. Now, library board appointment. So I think Councilman Strong sent out an email about that. He's served in the library board for quite a while, and I think his term is coming up the end of this month.
Yes, my term expires the last day of this month, and as I communicated to the rest of you, if it's your will and desire, I'm willing to continue serving there, but that's up to you.
I know that Councilman Strong has been very passionate about that, and done a wonderful job in the library, and is very dedicated to doing that. I would like to recommend that he continue to be in that position.
Okay, go on.
Someone.
A second? Okay, any further discussion?
Could you please have a voice vote, so that I can recuse myself from voting, because I'm legally required to not vote on an appointment.
Certainly, rule call one.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Recker? Councilwoman White, is that her mouthful?
Yeah, yes.
Councilwoman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn, Councilwoman Brockman?
Yes.
You are excusing yourself, Councilwoman?
I abstain.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Yes. Motion passes.
Well, thank you all. I'll, I'll come up with a form that you need to sign for this.
Mr. Coram, are you awake?
I'm Richard. Some of these new, I haven't met none of these in here, or some of these I have. I'm with the highway department. Here with the transfer, trying to, like that, see if I can move thirty-five thousand out of group health, put into purchase equipment for a total tank, six-thousand-gallon heated tank. And we use that for our RS2 and our AE90 oils that goes on the roadways. Like, when you see us out there spray patching, and when you see us out there chip sealing, that's what we're using, is that oil. For the past, I don't know, I know at least nine years, we've been going to Union County to get our oil, because they've got a place to store it. So we've got downtime when it comes to spray patching out here on these roads. And then another thing, when we're out chip sealing, we had a deal year before last for, we had a tanker that, that fills up our distributor for chip sealing. Well, we had half the tanker empty, and the other half, we had nowhere to put it when our distributor broke down. So we had to pay quite a bit of monies for them to take, take it back, because at the time, Jeff over at Union County, Union County superintendent, was full, and we hadn't worked that oil. So we're really needing this tank. I mean, it's been something, it's been brought up for a few years now, so that's why I'm
Richard, you've been talking to the commissioners about this tank a month or so ago, haven't you?
Yeah, Gary knows all about, and me and Gary's discussed it, and actually Frank, when he was in there, we talked about it, and it's been brought up quite often. And then we can use that oil a lot longer, too. We can switch over to the AE90 and do more spray patching towards the winter months. We can't do that now, because Jeff doesn't get that. But if we have our own tank, we can do that.
I'll move to approve the transfer request for the highway department.
A second.
You have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes, ahs, motion carries.
Go get them, Richard.
Aye.
Commissioners, don't both fight over.
I thought we got him turned down.
But one of you has to do your additional appropriation request for the Q cap.
Q cap bill, thirty-six-hundred dollars.
Well, the audience can't see, they're fighting over who's coming in.
I want additional appropriation to put gas line up to the building that was supposed to be for EMA about ten years ago, and also on up to the animal shelter. Because if we put natural gas in, it's gonna save a lot of money. Right now, we have electric heat at both places, and propane and electric at the animal shelter. And if we put natural gas in, it will be a big gas save, a big, a big savings. And all we need is the money for the materials, because the highway department would use their backhoe and dig the ditch, so it's a big savings there.
This entire amount, Commissioner, can, comes from our CCD fund, correct?
From the Q cap.
I have a question.
Three thousand of that's for the mower?
I can't read this. Oh, okay, and three thousand dollars of it is for the mower, for the animal shelter.
So the city's contributing three thousand for a mower, too? Is that correct?
He's paying the other half.
It says, it says for one half of the mower.
Yeah.
The city is paying.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
What happened to the other one? Did it break, or?
It's just becoming mostly age-wise, and it's size-wise, it's a lot smaller. With the reduced manpower up there, we need to get things done, be able to do things a
I have some questions. If you're using electric up there now, this'll help, but are you gonna have to put in some more burners or devices to use natural gas?
I didn't understand what you said.
Well, you're, you're putting in natural gas to replace propane, and that's not always just a one-for-one change-out. So you're gonna have to have some service to change the burners, and it doesn't replace the electric heat. You know, if you're using electric heat up there now, I mean, are you gonna put in another furnace?
Well, we're going to have to put a furnace in.
So.
In the one building, and the other building, there's electric heat, and they'll have to put some new lines in. But right now, we, we need to get, we need to get lines up there, so we, there's no sense putting the furnace in, we can't use until we have.
So you already have the furnace? We'll have to buy it, or pay to have it put in?
We'd have to change the orifice in the one in the animal shelter, there is no furnace in the other building.
What it's asking is, where, do we have a furnace purchased, or do we have to come up with more money for a furnace for the area that's electric heat?
The, the EMA building, the future EMA building will be, the heating and cooling will be figured in the total, finish, cost of that.
Okay.
Which we haven't gotten all those prices put together yet.
Okay. What about the animal shelter, where some of it's electric heat?
The animal shelter, we have our donated money to, to help towards providing facility improvements for the animals and whatnot, and we can use those funds to update our furnaces.
I think it's the Councilman Brockman was going towards, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Mark, last.
Mark, last, last year, I approached the subject with, with the council that EMA, because of the situation of our elevator and annex, if we move in EMA up there, the cost of doing that will be, guessed at least half of what it would be to replace the elevator. So if I understand correctly, this is just the beginning of the project, this is just to put the gas line in. They'll actually attach from the gas line at the proving grounds up there.
No, they're going to go from Michigan. They'll go from Michigan Avenue up because they, I talked to the gas company and their new supervisor for maintenance said that they had a gas line that ran down Michigan Avenue and it was quicker and shorter distance and less pipes and such than it was from Indiana work.
He's the expert. They told me the exact opposite last year. At any rate, that's, that's the idea. There is, there is the electric heat in the EMA building, but it's just for a certain area and if it's still going on, they give you like a $400 rebate to switch out from electric to natural gas.
I did talk to Tom Watts and I ran into Tom up there, he was doing some other stuff and he had mentioned that to me, what you guys were thinking about doing, I survived.
Yeah.
About when he talked about the rebate, so he said there's, we'll be money ahead, is what he was saying.
Yes.
Mr. President, if there are no further questions or comments, I'll move to approve the request for the $3,600 from KUMCAT Development.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, we motion for, to approve the transfer request from the KUMCAT Development Fund, the amount of $3,600. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes aye, motion carries. Sheriff, I know you've had a long day, I appreciate you staying around, I was, just didn't know if anybody was going to be around to ask some questions, so you're up and you can go to bed.
I'm here for two 144s, but I would think it would not be prudent to not address the elephant in the room. We did have an incident that took place last night at the jail where we had three individuals that overdosed in R2, one of our holding cells, and we lost two of those inmates. They were transported by EMS. Our jail staff did a fantastic job of administering CPR. There's two, two jail staff on the floor when this took place and they did a fantastic job of trying to revive these individuals. One was able to be saved. He is currently at another hospital outside of town. I really don't want to release where so we don't have a flood of family trying to visit, but he was revived due to the efforts of Fayette County EMS, Fire Department, City Police and Sheriff's Department, but we did lose two and I set up a very heavy heart. You never want to lose anyone in that situation. I had to make those death notifications this morning and both men that were lost were fathers. One family was on vacation trying to enjoy themselves and had to make that call, so I don't want to ignore that situation. Toxicology reports, autopsies were done this evening and we're waiting toxicology reports to see exactly, I believe it was heroin. Some of those scary words that are associated with heroin now, carfentanol, fentanyl have been thrown around, so until I get those back, we can't make an official statement, but if you guys have any questions about that situation or anything you'd like me to address, I'd like to do that before 144s.
I appreciate the work that you and your officers and jail officers do, you know, it's time needs a job and it's difficult and my heart goes out to those families and to your staff as well because they have to deal with that and I'm sure that there's a lingering side effect with that.
One officer's having a really rough time, so we will make sure she gets any type of counseling or that she would need, but she did a fantastic job. That's just when you try and anybody that's worked emergency services knows, anytime a situation arises. Just to make that clear, I've talked to Fox 59 today, CNN called today, spoke to them. This was an individual that was brought into our jail at 11 o'clock last night. This came from the inmate that, that survived, that had something inside his body that could not be found by the human eye. That would have to be found if you had an X-ray machine or your Superman. I mean, there was just nothing for our officers to see, even a strip search would not have seen it. They're not able to do body cavity searches, so, I mean, it's just one of those things. As I sat here and I was looking on my phone, I don't want you guys to think I was not paying attention to what was going on. The individual I spoke to from CNN said the reason he reached out to us, because there's been several other of these today throughout the country. I did find one, I think in New Hampshire. It is a growing trend. Some of the facilities are now buying body scanners, which are quite pricey. Our staff, unfortunately, the public only hears about something like this. They don't hear about when staff are tipped off by an officer coming in or they have a hunch by behavior or how someone is acting. When they keep them back in those holding cells, they shut their toilet off and then they go digging through feces or vomit to retrieve contraband, so, and that happens quite often. Happens in her facility, she can speak to that as well. We tip each other off, I get information, she gets information. We had a lot of this off, but it is a growing problem for both facilities. So just so that you guys are aware, as I said, we're staving off a lot of it, but it is happening more and more frequently. I would challenge you all to Google that after you leave, jail overdoses. As I sat there, I read about 20 stories in the last two months throughout the country, so, but any, any other questions in regards to that? I don't want to make it about that, but I also did not want to address that either.
Fantastic job, good.
Thank you, sir.
I have a ask. Will there be any kind of a debriefing for your staff?
There will be a debriefing. Unfortunately, our chaplain, right now, who is a pastor of Garrison Creek Baptist Church and is my father-in-law, Tim Flutie, tonight is getting PET scan done for cancer. He is our chaplain and usually for carcinoid cancer, he is unavailable. I had a few pastors reach out today, which are great friends in this community. The calls I've received today, I got broad shoulders, I can take it, but I really appreciate everybody just, hey, or how are you doing, but my concerns for those families, but those pastors that reached out today, I would probably have one of them help to facilitate a, a debriefing with our staff, so, like I said, one is having a really tough time with it, so. And she did a, she did a fantastic job. She was in charge and she took charge and really drug a man about twice her size out of a cell and started CPRs and probably her, so, and, and everybody that was there last night did a terrific job. There will be a debriefing, so long story short. Moving on, unless you guys have any other questions. I will address one other thing. Been great if this had happened before, but National Institute of Corrections will be here tomorrow. They'll be conducting interviews with all facets of our criminal justice system to address our overcrowding issues. They will be talking to myself, the commissioners, both judges, prosecuting, prosecutor's office and probation. Thursday afternoon, we'll have a working lunch from 10 to 2 and they will give their assessment on what our issue is. When people ask, why is the jail so overcrowded? I tell them we have active police officers and we do. We have great officers that are out arresting people. The problem is greater than what our jail can hold. They will tell us where they feel the issue is, this is what this organization, organization does. We've been trying to get them down here for probably since last budget time, that's how hard they are to get here, so they will be here starting tomorrow and I would encourage anyone from the public and all of you Wednesday, or I'm sorry, Thursday, to be in the prosecutor's conference room. We're providing lunch. I know that'll get a few of you here.
What time?
I'm scheduled at 11 tomorrow, so.
Okay, all right. Well, Thursday will be the actual result of that, so, and Mike will be there, Gary's going to be there, so we appreciate you guys being there and should shed some light on a course of action for us, so. That's all I got for that. 144s, I have two jail officer open positions.
Joey, what time is that, 10 to 2 on Thursday?
10 to 2 Thursday here at the prosecutor's office. Prosecutor's conference room, I'm sorry.
So you got 144 for two jail officers?
Two jail officers, two open positions. The new officers are Donnie Sparks, and I have to look her name up, sorry. Miranda Woodhand is the other. Interviewed them in the last two weeks, seemed to be pretty good officers, pretty good candidates for officers, I should say. We'll see how they work out once they get started, but there's two open positions.
I'm going to approve. Motion to approve the 144s from the sheriff, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the 144s for this sheriff, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again for what you do and all your staff and some of my regards, please.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Coram, did you say you wanted to say something?
Yes, I promised to quit. Dave Conwell from the Attica County Soil and Water Conservation District Board. Last February, we had, we had a meeting at which, man named, excuse me, Bob Barer spoke about the Whitewater River and the Whitewater River, as you, I hope you know, is a pretty unique asset and potential liability in this county. It's the fastest-moving river in the state. It has the most entertainment potential for people and also has the most destruction potential for the people who are worried about maintaining roads and bridges and things like that. So it's good to know about it and Mr. Barer is an expert on how rivers behave and he did a good job, I think, telling us about it last February. Several of you in the, in the room were at that meeting, I appreciate you coming and the feedback I got was that we'd be, we'd welcome a return performance by him and we've, I think you may have received the note from me saying that, that he will be here February, July 13th. Still looking, working on a venue, the Roberts Building is a nice, a great facility and that's why somebody beat me to it, so we won't have it there, but I'll get a, I'll let you know as quick as I can where it's going to be. It'll be 6:30 July 13th, somewhere in Conradsville.
How many people do you expect?
Pardon?
How many people do you expect?
Well, I, I have no idea. We had something like 40 or so at this last one, but I'm intending to get people from the Whitewater watershed there, not just, I'm focusing on us because we're Fayette County, but Wayne County, Union County and Franklin County particularly, I want to get the same bodies there of the, the people that have to deal with the infrastructure and promoting their area there, and so I'll be letting them know about this, too. Want you to know first. So that's, that's what will be happening. Mr. Barer will be back and he knows we're, we'll be interested in going further than we did at that meeting, okay? The other real quick thing, also having to do with the river is the Whitewater River cleanup is July 19th. It's the, we're calling it the Rubber Ducky Cleanup because we're going to plant some rubber duckies up and down the river where people, where they should be looking for trash, they can find a rubber ducky, they might get a little prize. It's kind of an Easter duck, I guess we call it. That is July 19th, 8 o'clock in the morning at, at Robinson's campground. That's a Wednesday. That's cleaning up a, a river for the county. I would think that anyone that wants to let a county employee loose to go do that, they'd be doing county work, so they'd be welcome to have a cleanup that day, too. That's all I have, thank you very much. Hope to see you on the 13th, July 13th. Any questions about it?
I got, I got your notice, I found your notice in my mailbox yesterday, David, and I've already marked that date on the calendar, so I'm good. I'm ready to go through another session with this. I enjoy it.
We'll have cookies.
That's fine, we'll have cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any patron concerns? If not, can you motion adjourn?
I will.
Second.
First, second, any further discussion? All those in favor of adjourned in this meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, motion carries.
Mr.?